Okay, welcome everyone to the zoning board of appeals meeting for August twenty third, two thousand and eighteen. If you would kindly make sure that your phones were off, we'd appreciate it. Right, first thing we have up is the reserve decision, right? Appeal number two thousand and eighteen dash L thirty nine, one eighty Creek Road. We're waiting on some information from the planning board. So this appeal is going to be moved to September thirteenth. Can I hear motion for adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn to September thirteenth.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we have moved that appeal to September thirteenth.
Appeal number two thousand and eighteen zero four zero Preston House LLC, four twenty eight East Main Street, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred one twenty nine three thirteen, DC one zoning. For variances, Zendo relief from chapter three oh one, section two forty nine C four, where proposed freestanding monument sign has side yard setback of seven point four feet and the minimum required is fifteen feet by previously granted relief or twenty five by code. Section two fifty nine B one, where east side entrance LED lamp nexus, light bollards, and east side LED building wash light blanca are not full cutoff fixtures and full cutoff luminaries are required. Section two fifty nine G eleven, where east side LED building wash light has a Kelvin rating of three thousand twenty-two and the maximum permitted is three thousand. And section two sixty A, where east side LED building wash light mounted height is approximately fifty seven feet and the maximum permitted is sixteen feet.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Eric Russo. I'm with the law firm of Van Brunschess, we act in Russo, with law offices at one forty Main Street, Saddle, New York. I'm here tonight representing the applicant Jay Petricelli Development Associates, the general partnership out of one hundred Comex Street in Ronkonkoma. Joseph Petricelli, the managing member. The property in question is what you now know as the Preston House Hotel and Restaurant. We have been before you here at the board on two prior occasions. The applications previously were October twenty seventh sixteen and May twenty fourth of eighteen. The reason we're here tonight, as stated by Ms. Collins, your secretary, in the call of the meeting, is to address four issues. The first is to correct the error that was presented by the applicant in his prior application as of May the twenty fourth of eighteen. It had to do with the signage setback. We provided you at the time with a survey that was given to us by our client, who did not have his engineer Doug Adams from Young &amp; Young prepare the actual survey. He did a distance and put forward that it was fifteen feet from the property line to the respective sign location. The board granted that application unanimously. And then when we went through the per- and got a permit, and then we went through the process of trying to finalize our site plan, and it came to light that he measured it from the concrete curb instead of the property line. So the actual distance for the sign setback on Ostrander was seven point four, not fifteen. So we're here to correct and amend that. I provided you with a document photograph binder, which shows approximately fifty-five photos and all of the various documents that we are seeking to correct and propose. And you can see that the sign has been constructed, is there, has a permit, but the actual distance instead of being fifteen feet is seven point four from the property line. The remaining three items that were cited in the call have to do with lighting on the building. We were going through c- our site plan review with the planning board staff, and we realized that there were concerns that the lighting fixtures that were installed on site were not full cutoffs, but they were partial cutoffs in terms of the bollards. And there were several of those on the property. In addition, we also realized that the Kelvin rating, when we finally had it, was not three thousand Kelvin, it was three thousand twenty-two. And the last had to do with the fact that the wash lighting was situated on the property at fifty-seven feet, lighting downward of the building, as opposed to six feet, as was permitted by code. So the other three items all have to do with existing lighting. This board is familiar and can take notice, if you've seen the construction of the building. We have a temporary CO that was issued as we complete the zoning issues with this board and the planning issues with the planning board. It was just recently reextended until February of this next year, in February, I believe it is February fifth of nineteen. I provided you with a copy of that. If we get the necessary relief from this board, we can then go back to the planning department and finalize all of our other site plan issues and get our permanent CO for the property. In our opinion, two sixty seven B, the variance relief that we are seeking in no way would cause anything in terms of an unnecessary hardship or change the character of the neighborhood, detriment to nearby properties. Since it all exists, yes, it's self-created, but it is aesthetically pleasing and is not inappropriate. And there are no environmental or physical changes that we could make that would be alternatives. And in some instances, the feasibility, the substantiality is de minimis. The difference as to the Kelvin rating is all of twenty-two. The height has to do with the fact that we have a five-story building that was approved by the town board as part of the approval process, so it's to light it so that it looks aesthetically pleasing. And the distance is a sighting error, we would have filed for it correctly for the signage. I don't think, if you look at the photographs, and because you're familiar with the site, I don't think you have, would have any issues, then we respectfully ask that you grant the application so we can complete our CO process. I thank you for your time. If you have questions, be happy to respond. We advertised and noticed, and I've provided the affidavits and photographs of same. I have nothing further unless you have a question with me.
Do you have any question? Is anyone here to speak of this? The sign of the building certainly is attractive daytime and night, and these are very small corrections that you had to make. You made the presentation really well, you covered all the bases, so I don't have any problems. You guys have any problem?
No, I don't have any problems.
Let's read it.
Okay. I move that appeal in Preston House LLC at four twenty eight East Main Street, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred one twenty nine three thirteen, DC one zoning, for variances and relief from chapter three oh one, section two forty nine C four, where proposed freestanding monument sign has a side yard setback of seven point four and the minimum required is fifteen feet by previously granted relief or twenty-five feet by code. Section two fifty nine B one, where east side entrance LED lamp nexus, light bollards, and east side LED building wash light blanca are not full cutoff fixtures and the full cutoff luminaries are required. Section two fifty nine G eleven, where east side LED building wash light has a Kelvin rating of three thousand twenty-two, where the maximum permitted is three thousand. And section two sixty A, where the east side LED building wash light monument height is approximately fifty-seven feet and the maximum permitted is sixteen feet. Be granted in accordance with the application sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
So move.
Second. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your variance has been granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a good evening, and thank you to zoning council and-
Counselor, can I make a point in the future? If you find anything else during this site plan review, before they issue a CO, like, I think I could speak to the other members, we can reopen a hearing.
Okay.
And we can do that, and we can make the motion to do so, so you wouldn't have to file tremendous amount of paperwork. Especially on small errors like this.
And I would appreciate that, but in this particular case-
We'd be open to it, that's all.
I thank you. It all came to light-
Yeah, it's fine.
-for the efforts of staff after the fact.
I get it. I just wanted to pass it on to you, so that in the future it'll be easier.
I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You got it, Eric.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Appeal number two thousand and eighteen zero three seven eight oh one F Realty Corp., fifteen sixty-three Main Road, Jamesport, tax map number six hundred sixty-eight four sixty-five point one, BC zoning, for variances, Zendo relief from chapter three oh one, section two fifty-four F one, where canopy signs are internally illuminated, which is not permitted.
Your attorney, right?
Uh, yes.
Please state the name and address.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the board. Kevin O'Brien from the firm of Murphy Bartson O'Brien, offices at twenty-two Jericho Turnpike, Mineola, New York. Here representing the applicant eight oh one F Realty Corp. with respect to this application. To a certain extent, not too dissimilar from the preceding application, sort of just correcting a little bit of, I don't know if it's an error, but just, we had appeared before this board, approx- a little bit over a year ago-
Year ago.
-in connection with applications involving this existing Valero service station, the existing Valero service station in Jamesport. We appeared before the board, we filed applications for basically all the signs that are existing at the premises, both the canopy signs and the freestanding identification sign and price sign. For whatever reason, the canopy signs, I guess, never made it to the public hearing at that particular time, though the, the price and identification sign, the freestanding identification sign appeared at that hearing. So at that time, you know, we made our presentation. The board graciously acted favorably upon the determination. And then when we were proceeding further, it was determined that we didn't have the appropriate approval for the canopy sign. So now we're kind of returning to the board, sort of in connection with that same application, where, I'm sure the board is familiar with the location, where we have essentially, potentially three signs. It would be a logo sign which faces Main Road, which has the V of Valero. We also have, facing Jamesport, the Valero sign also with a logo sign. And these signs, I'll give you just a little two-second history of the location. We had, the site has been operated, at least by these operators, for over, close to thirty years. It's currently operated as a Valero service station. Before that, it was a Coastal service station. Before that, it was a Gulf service station. And before that, it was, I think, a Metro service station. So it's, you know, through the years, this had a number of different brand identification. The brand identification that's currently in place is Valero. All those, so from the time it was Metro, to Gulf, to Coastal, to, to Valero, we've always had signage at the location, signage was always internally illuminated. So we think that there's really not much of any change, or physically, we're really not, with respect to the canopy signs, seeking anything that's, that's different. The sign that was approved relative to the, the ID and price, we put some decorative elements, and that was, you know, that sign has changed a little bit from what the sign that presently exists at the, at the location currently. I do have with me, I'm sure you probably have, but I have the board's prior determination, as well as-
Petition in support.
I think we have that. We have a copy of that. It's July two thousand seventeen.
Oh, yes, okay. And here's the petition, people who supported the application from the, from the area.
Everything else in connection with the site essentially remains, remains the same, and this, I guess, aspect of, of the application was just, I guess, inadvertently, well, it was never really, wasn't part of the denial, so that's why it never appeared before the board.
Counselor, I see on your site plan, you mentioned on this, it's depicted that there was a permit issued for the canopy sign.
Uh, yes, I believe so.
CB twenty-six nine forty. The permit was issued for the sign itself or the canopy itself?
Um-
I don't have it in front of me, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I, you know what, and I can't swear to that because I don't have that in front of me.
So, so they issued you a building permit for a sign permit for the canopy? I'm not sure which one it is, but you're also asking for LED lighting internally, correct?
Uh, internal illumination, yes, which currently exists.
That's what you're asking for-
Correct.
-but it's already there.
Correct.
I see.
And, and I think what I was trying to indicate before is, for all the brands that we've had ever since we've been over there, we've always had some, you know, some form of-
Illumination.
-of illumination.
With or without permit.
Yeah. I, I, I can't-
I know you're trying to get it straightened out, which is good.
And, and that's exactly it. There, there was some issues with the town-
Yeah.
-and, you know, we're here to try and just resolve everything.
I have that. Thank you. So, so you're really, what you're seeking is the internal LED. You're showing that there was a canopy sign for that permit number, and of course, all of this exists, so we're just approving a pre-existing condition-
Correct.
-with the LED. We did approve the pylon sign, correct?
That is correct.
In that determination.
Yeah, and-
So I don't see too many people here opposed to it that I know of. So, I mean, me personally, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. It's a pre-existing condition, so, but you have to promise me in the future you'll always apply for permits.
As long as they have, as long as they have me. I will have to admit, I wasn't involved in any of the prior aspects of it, and I know they did have some other people involved, but I find it's-
I know it's no different than any other Valero station on the island, they're all the same. And I know they try to achieve that in every town, so that's why I wouldn't be opposed to it. Would you like this petition back?
Well, if, if-
I don't need it.
If you don't need it, whatever, whatever was the board's pleasure.
Chairman, do you want to look for the record?
Yeah, I don't recommend it, it's any sense.
It's probably been a good idea to, if you don't mind.
Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this?
I didn't think there was much opposition. Okay.
You say you're okay?
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal, eight oh one F Realty Corp., which is located at fifteen sixty-three Main Road, Jamesport, for variances and relief from chapter three oh one, section two fifty-four F one, where the canopy signs are internally illuminated, which is not permitted, and is a pre-existing condition. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed by the building inspector.
Second.
With the building inspector, excuse me.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that has the variance have been granted.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Counselor.
It looks like you got good weather for that cardboard boat race that's coming up.
This weekend?
Yeah.
Are you gonna be there?
I hope so. You know, I love those things.
Yeah, I know.
I have to admit. Have a good night.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Brian, just remember the promise you made, it was on record and plus you're on film, so, thank you.
Like I said, so long as-
They've got me, you know, I, I absolutely agree.
You make sure they have everything. Good, thank you.
Okay, go.
Appeal number two thousand and eighteen zero four one George Echols, one forty one Fire Lane, Wading River, tax map number six hundred thirty-seven two four point one, RB eighty zoning, for variances, Zendo relief from chapter three oh one, section two twenty-two B, where proposed addition has a rear yard setback of thirty-seven point three two feet and the minimum required is fifty feet. And proposed addition increases gross floor area within a required front, side, and rear yard, representing an increase in degree of nonconformity which is not permitted.
Are you attorney, ma'am? Are you attorney?
I am not, I'm an expediter.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you solemn swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, and uphold the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Eileen Rowan from Rowan Permit Expediting, located in Corum, New York. Good evening, Chairman and Board members. The prop- the property owner would like to construct a second-story addition to the existing dwelling. The variances requested are for a rear yard setback and for the increase in the degree of nonconformity. The existing house has a letter of pre-existing use. An addition of living space has been issued a certificate of occupancy. All existing structures at this point are legal. The existing rear yard setback presently is forty point seven feet, whereas the proposed rear yard setback is thirty-seven point three. This represents a relaxation of approximately three feet from the existing setback. There are a few homes on this road that have rear yard setbacks that are less than the proposed rear yard for this application. The house on the corner has a rear yard setback of approximately twenty-one feet. A few of the houses to the south have rear yard setbacks of twenty-five feet, twenty feet, and one house has a rear yard setback of sixteen feet. The addition of a second story does increase the degree of nonconformity and therefore requires a variance for same, but it is basically within the existing footprint of the dwelling. It is not encroaching any further into the side yard or the front yard. As the general area is heavily vegetated, the addition would be screened for the most part by existing trees. One of the houses to the south of the subject house has a footprint that covers approximately twenty percent of the lot. The house subject of this application is twelve point seven percent. This includes the accessory building that is non-living space. This house to the south has a second story. It has a similar side yard setback, representing a similar encroachment of the second story into required yards. The proposed height of the dwelling is twenty-eight feet, well below the allowable height of thirty-five feet. Not a single home on this block is conforming for setbacks or lot area. It is an eclectic group of homes built a long time ago. I would just point out that the subject property is approximately three times the size of most of the lots on this street. The property owners have obtained approximately nineteen letters of support from their neighbors, and I would like to submit them to the board. Thank you. The property owner would like to speak to the board.
Come.
Okay, thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemn swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, and uphold the truth, so help you God?
I do, sir.
Please state your name and address.
Okay, my name is George Eicholtz, at one forty one Fire Lane in Wading River, New York. So, the reason for, the reason why we're here, obviously, is for variance, and I just wanted to make a few points. One is that long before we knew about this variance, we, my love and I invested a lot of time and money in this. We didn't know until later on that we needed to do this. So we have about approximately thirty thousand dollars tied into this already. Number two, this home that we purchased was a family home, so it's very sentimental to us that we do complete this project. We have every single homeowner on our block has signed for us in support of us doing this project. And the home directly behind us, including Karen Court, which you have the letters there, they all signed also. They're all in support of this. They'd like to see a bigger and nicer home also. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Does the board have any questions?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us?
Is there petition for support?
I move that the appeal for George Echols at one forty one Firehouse Lane, Wading River, tax map number six hundred thirty-seven dash two dash four point one, RB zoning eighty, for variances two and relief from chapter three oh one, section two 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 E, where proposed addition has a rear yard setback of thirty-seven point thirty-two feet and the minimum required is fifty feet. And proposed addition increase gross floor area within a required front, front, side, and rear yard, representing an increase in degree of nonconformity which is not permitted. Be granted in accordance with the application and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
So move.
Mr. Barnes.
Need a second.
Second, please.
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
You voted, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote aye, so your variance has been granted. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Appeal number two thousand and eighteen zero four two Kenneth Schuman, eighteen Fanning Boulevard, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred eighty-four four fourteen, RA forty zoning, for variances, Zendo relief from chapter three oh one, section nine A one C, where the proposed garage has setbacks of five and ten feet, and the minimum required is twenty feet. Section nine A one D, where the accessory shed under a hundred and forty-four square feet has setbacks to the dwelling and the garage of zero and three feet respectively, and the minimum separation required is ten feet. And section eleven, where the proposed impervious surface is twenty point six percent of the lot area, and the maximum permitted is fifteen percent.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemn swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, and uphold the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir, I did.
Please state your name and address.
My name's Kenneth Schuman. I live at twelve Pegs Lane, Riverhead, New York.
Okay, Schuman, tell us what you'd like.
I have a small property on Fanning Boulevard, which has had a mobile home on it for years. My son wants to move in and he wants a garage, so we're, we went to try and get a permit for one and found out that our setbacks were too large. So in order to fit the garage in there, we need a, a variance.
Is this, there's gotta be livable space in the garage, is that what you-
No, 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 just, just storage and shower. And that shed that's there, that's twenty-year-old shed, it may not even make it to the move. I just wanted to put it on there just in case it does.
Are you talking about?
That, there's a little shed.
Which one?
Uh, right on the east side of-
Where the barn is gonna be?
Where, right, it's on the exist- it's on an angle there. I'm just gonna move it over towards the mobile home.
So, the frame shed that's next to the mobile home, that's only, what, three feet apart? Did the building inspector address you about that?
About, uh-
About the shed that's next to the, or behind, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, that would be part of the, the variance, we wanna, uh-
So you are gonna relocate it-
Right.
-away from the structure.
Right, it's gonna come from that corner, and we're almost right next to the mobile home. There should be two-
So you'll see it from Peg Lane, or, or is this Fanning Boulevard?
That's Fanning Boulevard, yeah.
Okay, let's see. And we came around, all right. So, some of the property looks a little in disrepair right now.
Yeah, we're waiting to find out what's going on here.
Is that, is that something that, you live there already?
My daughter's living there right now.
I see.
Yeah, it's been, when I bought it back in two thousand and two, it's been basically a stepping stone for almost everybody in my family. They live there, and then next one moves in, we fix it back up, and then the next one moves in.
Okay, all right, well, now, my only concern-
And my son's next.
My only concern is that the skirting and a lot, all the things, the property maintenance on that is very poor.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that maybe, I don't, I don't wanna put against the condition, 'cause it's already a law.
I'm gonna do it, and I'll, I'll swear to it.
I wanna hear it.
Yeah, I'll swear to it.
Okay.
You give me that, and I'll make sure it looks nice and pretty when it's done.
Okay. I mean, it's an awfully big building, but I don't know if there's many people opposed to it, we're gonna find out in a minute.
The, the biggest problem would have been Nick next door, and I bought it from his, his mother-in-law. It was a dump when I bought it. It was a dump when I bought it. I took out three thirty-yard dumpsters full of garbage. I took out two, two or three, uh, automobiles. It was just a dump.
So it's getting better?
Yes, much better.
So you're gonna replace the skirting?
Yes, yes, yes.
Dial it all up, cut the grass, and life's gonna be good?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just waiting to find out what's going on here.
Um, so this garage, you have an access, you have a fifteen-foot wide garage coming in off of Fanning?
Right.
So is that gonna be two doors, one door?
One door.
And it's gonna be a,
One ten-foot door.
A ten-footer?
Yeah.
Okay. And is there a height, any concern on the height? I mean, is this gonna be a two-story pole barn? Is this gonna be a six-story?
No, so, uh, well, twelve foot. It's gonna be kinda high. We want it a little bit high so we can pull a truck into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I ju- we see, we don't get plans to the building, so.
Oh, you don't have that?
I don't have that. You might've given it to the building inspector?
Uh, yeah, I did.
And, and then we only get the application.
If you'd like to see some, I have it right here.
I would, if you don't mind. And this is gonna be a metal building?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbard doing this?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Alright, so it's not gonna be excessively high. That's, that's what I was worried about. I didn't want it to be overbearing to the primary structure or the main structure. That's what I was concerned about.
To be totally honest with you, in the future,
Mm-hmm.
I would like to probably move that mobile home out and maybe put a, a, a double-wide modular on there later on. But that's later on, uh, this, let's face it, it's a little expensive to live here, so I'd like to have something that I could retire into.
That's, it's a good idea.
You know, so I wanna keep the property up, I do. And I would like to maintain it.
Makes sense.
And I wouldn't mind having a garage later on either.
And you could probably pull it back a little too, utilize some of this space and pull it this way.
That's what I was thinking, going that way later. But we're talking another ten years, so I, I get a little bit more work to do.
I don't think I'll be on this board in ten years. Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Is anyone here to be heard? Did you wanna speak on this matter?
Yeah.
Come right up, please. Just pull that mic down a little bit so you can talk into it, alright? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Cecilia Limus. Uh, my address, one six seven, Middle Road.
I'm sorry, what was the street?
Middle Road.
On Middle, okay, one six seven.
So are you directly next to him?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, sir, what, say what you like.
Okay, if, uh, supposed to move down my cover, this is too close to my neighbor. The p- the proper locator is eighteen Fanning Boulevard.
I'm sorry, please say again. I don't understand what you're saying.
I, my English does not, not to,
No, that's fine. Take your time.
I received the, the sample.
And a notice?
And two paper. We say, I think so, my problem is the, the my shell. This, uh, is too close to the neighbor. I don't know what they exactly, what is the problem, for this is a problem I, I do, and I move it myself.
Well, I see you have a one-story framed building here. Is it your building that's on his property?
Yeah.
No, that's not it. No, you, you live, uh, you have the retaining wall, right?
Yeah, I know.
The, the big retaining wall.
And the middle.
So you're middle.
Well, they're showing on the survey, Ken. They're showing on the survey.
Yeah, this, the red one house.
Take a look at your survey.
Looks like his corner's on your line.
Yeah. It's an encroachment.
This is Fanning Boulevard.
Yeah.
Middle Road. Now, do you live here? This is the mobile home that I have?
No.
No?
I live in, uh,
This is Nick Luparella. Do you remember him?
Mm-hmm.
He lives, uh, he li- he, the red house?
Yeah, I remember the red house.
That's the red house. So which, which house is yours? This one right here?
Yes.
So you have the block wall right here? That's your house here?
Uh, no. This is my, my, no, this is one six seven and the, the middle road.
On Middle Road?
Yeah.
Oh, so you're over here. You're on this corner?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Alright, at least I know where you are, okay. So what's, uh, what was the problem?
This is, uh, the neighbor's, was, this is,
Right, that's, that's me.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is a paper leak about, uh,
Okay. Did you, did you have a, uh, an objection to what I wanted to do?
No, I don't have, no.
Hmm?
That one?
Yeah, did,
No, I don't have, no.
No?
Yeah, no.
Did, did, 'cause you, you, you didn't have to come down here unless you have an objection, if you don't want me to do it.
Yeah, well, the last, uh, couple months, I, I make it through the new fence, with the new fence.
You put a new fence in it?
Yeah.
So you did, uh, this fence over here?
Yeah. But this is the red house, the red one, that old house?
Yeah, that's not my house.
Oh, oh, oh.
No, I'm, I'm the, the mobile home over here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I don't know what this is.
Okay, yeah, that, well, that was me. I, I'm the one who sent this out to you. Because they, they want me to, eh, let everybody know who's touching my property or around it, what I'm doing. So, it is, if you don't have any problem with me, they just need to know that.
No, it's, uh, long time, I leave, they don't know.
So you don't object?
I think he has a problem with Nick.
I think that's,
Where's Nick?
I don't know what is, uh, who, who feels it, for me.
Yeah, I, I, the, the red house isn't me. That's not me. I'm this one over here.
Well, the, the garage is red, I'm sorry, right? The house and the garage is, is red.
Yeah, but that's not me. That's not what we're talking about here.
Oh.
That's a, that, that's the, a different property.
I don't know what this is, oh.
Yeah.
What would the problem is in the, the, the cover piece, the shell?
The, my property is the one with the mobile home on it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
By the, the red one house.
Right, and I wanna put a garage up.
Ah, okay.
That was, it wasn't the right one?
No.
Alright, that's okay, it's alright. That's a good.
Alright, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm sorry for, uh, most of this.
That's okay.
Nice meeting you.
Ken, thank you for your help. Thank you for your help.
Okay.
Alright, is anyone else? I don't think there is. Uh, who has a reading?
Okay, Mr. Schuman. You swear and promise that you'll clean up that property?
I swear to God.
You're on.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, good. Then I move at the appeal, Kenneth Schuman.
I promise. I don't like the way it looks at either of you.
Good. Of eighteen Fanning Boulevard, Riverhead, New York, blah, blah, for variances and relief from chapter three oh one, section nine A one C, where the proposed garage has a setback of five and ten feet and the minimum required is twenty feet. Section nine A one D, where the accessory shed under a hundred forty-four square feet has setbacks to the dwelling and the garage of zero and three feet respectively. And the minimum separation required is ten feet. And section eleven, where the proposed impervious surface is twenty point six feet of lot area and the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. Be approved in accordance with applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your variance has been granted. Good luck and don't let us down.
Thank you, guys.
Alright. He must be financing it, I take it. Chris, uh, Chris, do you have anything else for us?
The minutes.
The minutes we have to approve. What's the date? August, uh,
August ninth.
May I have a motion that the minutes of August ninth be approved?
I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the August ninth meeting be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we have, uh, what's the last thing we do, the, uh, here's my change.
Next meeting.
Next meeting date is September thirteenth. Hope we're all gonna be here?
Yep, thank you.
That wasn't too bad. That was interesting. It was, uh, handled in a very nice way, you know, I mean, uh,
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous vote, Chris.
An eye vote, aye.
This is all yours, okay?
Come on.
Alright.